Check.
Good evening, everyone. And this is a public meeting of the Joint Dennis Yarmouth Board of Selectmen on September 27th, 2018 at the Station Avenue Elementary Cafeteria. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think what we'll start with, start to do at least, is kind of introduce ourselves around the room. I think everybody knows each other, but we'll do that for the public as well. Why not?
Chris Dwelly, Yarmouth Assistant Town Administrator.
I'm Mike Stone, Yarmouth Board of Selectmen.
Mark Forrest, Yarmouth Board of Selectmen.
Norm Holcomb, Yarmouth Board of Selectmen.
Tracy Post, Yarmouth Board of Selectmen.
John Terrio, Dennis Board of Selectmen.
Bob Mazadre, Dennis Board of Selectmen.
Chris Landigan, Dennis Board of Selectmen.
Paul McCormick, Dennis Board of Selectmen.
Cheryl McMahon, Dennis Board of Selectmen.
Taylor Cobb, Assistant Town Administrator, Town of Dennis.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, I think intended this to be a workshop and a less informal kind of thing, and we're not planning any presentations or anything of that nature. But just in terms of background, I think, you know, we've had some negotiations over a number of years on the regional school agreement. And I think the last formal meeting between the negotiating committees was in March. And then it was, additional meetings were postponed because of elections and so forth. So, and we've had some back and forth correspondence, and I think that's why we're here tonight, is to follow up on that. So, you know, I think the first thing that really, or that is on the schedule is just to talk about the feasibility study that we entered into over a year ago, it's almost two years ago at this point. And, you know, I think the Yarmouth Board is certainly interested in knowing where we stand on that and what the intent is moving forward with, from, you know, the town of Dennis.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Bob Mazadre and Dennis. We have always contended and always stated that we would pay our fair share of that feasibility study should the joint middle school be built. As you know, the feasibility study was originally granted for the Wixson School.
No.
I'm sorry, for the Mattakese School. So, yes, we do plan on taking care of our fair share of that. And to go one step further with that, we were looking at the, originally we were discussing the split of how that feasibility study would be split, and we are in agreement of splitting it based on the foundation enrollment.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Okay. Well, I think that's clear at this point, and then, you know, I'm not sure if there's any other thoughts or input from our board, but we appreciate the fact that, you know, you're willing to come to the table on that. That's a, I think, a fair resolution of the whole situation. So, you know, I think the next thing is, on our list would be the calculation of, yes, okay, Paul, sure.
Well, I just wanted to add one piece. And I remember being in this very room when Eric Tolly was the one who suggested, let's do a new school, because he said, this was the thing, and I believe that it's the best thing for us to do, to put those grades together, not only for the school, but for the school children, so that we, the teachers, the staff, can keep an eye on them through four grades. I think that is a really good idea for all, for all the school children in both towns. I just wanted to add that, that Eric was right a long time ago.
I tell you, I think that's pretty well shared between the boards, as to what the community will feel, and both communities will feel in the final analysis, I'm not really sure. But the next item is more difficult. It is one that we've, our negotiating committees have stumbled on, certainly over the last year or so. And, you know, I think at, we had been back and forth by, just kind of filling in history, and had negotiated and discussed at some length operating costs and sharing operating costs. And our, Yarmouth believed that, given the share of operating costs that was put on the table in March by Cleon at that time, and I think he represented that as the position of the Dennis Board, and I'm not saying that that's final, I'm just saying that's what he represented it as. Based on that, then, oh, and he also proposed at that time a share, and I believe that was 35% of capital costs. So that entire picture kind of comes together in terms of a total cost sharing in both areas. So, you know, I think what, if, if we want to isolate the discussion to just capital costs and changing capital costs, then I think, you know, our Board has been talking about that in terms of, well, we have to look at a broader picture of the, or a, you know, a broader picture of sharing of costs. So, you know, I think that's, that's where our Board, I think, has stood on that. Some members of the Board have suggested that, you know, we should, like, sharing an apartment, and I won't go through the example that I embarrassed Tracy with one evening, but like an apartment, we should just simply share the apartment 50/50. And, you know, the state, the State Office of the Auditor has recommended in a lengthy report that towns share not only capital costs, but operating costs based upon equalized values. That, that's not a viable situation. It's not one that we're interested in, it's not one that we would ask for, because it would be an entire flip, and it wouldn't be fair to Dennis. It would require Dennis to put in about 55% of all costs, and that would, I mean, that would be a disastrous situation, and again, it's not something that we're interested in. So, you know, what we are interested in is, is working through, if we're just going to talk about capital costs, then, you know, I think we're looking for some, you know, significant give on the part of Dennis. But I'll let you guys talk a little bit about where we are.
If I could, when you say capital costs, I, maybe this is my misunderstanding, but I thought we were going to be talking about sharing, how we would, to share the capital costs of the middle school.
Of the middle school.
Of the proposed middle school at this, at this particular juncture.
Just the middle school, I think is, right.
All right, so.
Yeah, we're not talking about going back, and we've never talked about going back and adjusting any of the share arrangements with regard to the high school or any other types of costs that have already been committed. And furthermore, I think what we had envisioned and had put into the proposed agreement was that, that both towns would commit to covering the capital costs of any schools that serviced only children in their individual town. So, you know, if you had, for your elementary school, if you had to do a major capital program on that, even if there were Yarmouth kids in that school, you would be responsible 100% for that. Same thing with regard to Yarmouth, with Yarmouth Elementary Schools. So, you know, there was no, no, we did not envision any change in the historical arrangement other than saying, we're going to be responsible for the schools that are in our town that are servicing our kids.
Well, I, well, I understand the premise of, you know, if you're, basically if you're renting an apartment, you would split the rent 50/50 unless there was some other sort of arrangement, but in terms of, and this is just my thought process, and I'm not sure how the rest of them feel, but with the middle school, I would be, well, I've talked to Bob about this, because I, replacing, if we were to go back to negotiating table with members of, from both towns, I was appointed by the Board to replace Cleon on that, on that team. So I've been talking with Bob about it, and we, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that we would propose to share the capital, the debt service, essentially is what we're talking about, the debt service for the new middle school. And this is something that I have said, and the Board has not taken a position on it, so we might talk about it here, but I would say that it would be based on foundation enrollment at the time that the vote passes, if it passes in December. Meaning, apparently, and I could be wrong, but I think historically, it was the enrollment, the net enrollment that it was based on at the time the debt service was issued. And I don't think that's necessarily fair on either one. It should be when the, both towns decided, the voters decided that it was now time to build a new school, and that snapshot of however the enrollment is at that time, and I believe it, I just think, my train of thought is that when any of it's based on a ratio, it should be the foundation enrollment. And Bob and I are on that same page, that foundation enrollment takes into account all the students that are in public schools, and that that is the true count, and those are our students, and that's the way it should be. And in places it's not clear in the regional agreement, that's something that we should definitely amend that. I had heard about some of the shared capital being, you know, there's a perception that some aspects of the construction might be shared at a different ratio, probably 50/50, if it was like hallways or gymnasium or something like that. I'm not sure how, I haven't reconciled with that yet. But I would, fair to say that we, by ourselves, it's just Dennis, if we had to build a school, we wouldn't be building it as big as it would be to accommodate the whole population of students that we educate. So that's why I believe for so many years, it's just been based on the student enrollment. That, that's as far as I get with it, right, at this, at this juncture, because nothing else has been in front of me to make any other kind of decision.
And I would agree with that. We all know that the Chapter 70 formula may not be perfect. And initially, when we went to that Chapter 70, Chapter 70 formula, all of the other expenses were based on net enrollment. And one way to alleviate some of the misconceptions of how the funds are being distributed appropriately is to base everything off of the foundation enrollment. In my opinion, I think that if each town is paying on the foundation enrollment, they are paying according to their students that live in that town. And from my opinion, that's where, where we should go, is just divide everything based on the foundation enrollment. Now, I will say, just to add in, this is not my opinion, but just to add in for everybody, that there are some people who have the mindset that there is, and there is a stipulation in the current agreement that deals with this, and that we should just stick with that. Or wait for the new agreement to be dealt with appropriately. And in my opinion, we can't wait. The school needs to be built.
Board members, have you got a comment at this point?
It's, it's a difficult topic, because all of us obviously are, have our own vested interests, and I think that, you know, we always say it's, we agree on the majority of the things, so to try to narrow it down to the things that we don't, capital is one of them. So, when I look at these types of things, I always try to put myself in both shoes. And, you know, from our perspective, we need to build another school as soon as this is done, meaning ME Small. So why would we build a 4-7 school with Wixson and pay 70% of that and then pay 100% of the next building? It's very difficult, because I feel like Dennis is extremely benefiting from a new facility. The savings of not having to build your own facility is significant, and I would like to think that there is value in that. I mean, at some point in time, you know, to Norm's point, we're not really getting into specific details about different areas, but there's a, there's a huge benefit to Dennis students. A new facility, number one. You'll use it equally as far as the cafeteria, the auditorium, the grounds, everything is kind of for both of our students. So for us to have to pay almost 70% of that, I think, is significant. It's significant. When I think about what is best for the Yarmouth taxpayers, my personal opinion is to build one school with ME Small and Mattakese and save the taxpayers of Yarmouth a lot of money. So for us, I feel like our decision to do this 4-7 school with Dennis is really helping Dennis not have to build a new school. We have to build a new school. We're going to be building a new school, we're probably going to have to build two schools. So when you think of it from a Yarmouth taxpayer's perspective, there's, there's a significant benefit to Dennis to not have to invest. And I, and I know you guys have looked at the cost of that, the cost of what a new school building, albeit what you said is true, Cheryl, it wouldn't need to be the size that we're looking at now. But to build it on your own, if you were to go that route, is going to be a lot more money than maybe a few percentage changes that we're asking for to do it together. That's my perspective.
Chris, did you want to say something?
One thing that I would urge the Dennis Board of Selectmen, and as I'm sitting here, I'm hearing what the Yarmouth Board is saying, and, you know, we're in a partnership, right? We're both partners, and, you know, we benefit from partnering with you with the regional school agreement, and you benefit with us, right? And just to play devil's advocate, although I totally understand the rationale using foundation enrollment, we're hoping that this school will be operational for 50 years, right? Give or take.
It would be nice, it would be a lot more. Yeah, if we build it right, you know, yeah.
So if, if the school opens its doors, let's say around 2022, and we close the doors potentially at 2072, it seems unclear to me if the foundation enrollment that we're using, the formula to build the school, if Dennis will continue to have the same population. So I wonder if we consider some sort of flexibility to account for, even though our school enrollment has gone decreased over the years, potentially thinking about how it could increase over the years.
Well, to that point, in 1992, the share was 42% Dennis and 58% Yarmouth. So there's been a shrinkage from a 42% share for Dennis in that time period down to 32%. Enrollment has gone down 25% in total during that time period, but the proportions, the shift has gone dramatically toward Yarmouth as there's been a shrinkage. And I think that that's, that's, that's been driving costs toward Yarmouth, fixed operating costs are a big issue, because the school can't, can't take out teachers or cut programs or do anything about those. They're, they're in the system. It's, you know, the, the, all the administrative costs and everything else, and that's part of the concept of what we've had been talking about is, you know, we need, we need to settle on something that is more palatable overall. And I, you know, the, I don't know when the, the current shift that has seemed to accelerate in the last five years, I don't know when that's going to stop. I have a sense it's probably going to bottom out about 30/70. And then, Chris, I think the point is, you know, what's the growth pattern? Well, Yarmouth is pretty well built out in terms of residents. I think we'll both see major changes when the sewer systems are installed. How that impacts both towns, I don't know. But I think your, your, your point is a valid one.
Norm, to follow up on that, you know, and I, and I made this previous comment, I think, at one of our Board of Selectmen's meetings, you know, first of all, you know, I need to, you know, commend and congratulate the Town of Yarmouth, you know, for, you know, we all know that there's a housing crunch here on Cape Cod. And, you know, I read in the paper, and I drive by it often enough to see the new Yarmouth Commons going in, you know, in 60-some-odd units, you know, that are going to be going there with one, two, and three bedroom units. Well, there's going to be more kids.
Yeah.
You know, with it as well. And, and I, I'm more of the net than the foundation. I know people don't agree with me. A lot of people don't agree with me. But, you know, 68 and change versus 31 and change, which is about the net, you know, somewhere right now. Whenever those units are built, our planner, our town planner says you can probably count on, you know, 20-plus additional students will come from that at different ages and so forth, so the numbers go up. You know, presently, as we speak, Dennis does not have a housing project going on, doesn't seem like we're not going to have, because I know that there's some stuff coming down the road. But the, 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 what's coming down our road is more senior-type housing versus family housing. So, yes, it has been escalating up. I don't think it's going to end. I think it's going to go. Now, I've made the comment, you know, that we're headed towards a 70/30 split, and we may eventually get there, and I'd be willing to, to talk about something less than that. But if you're sitting on the sidelines and you know nothing about, and you see the last five-year trending, we'll be at 70 before you know it. So, in fairness to us, we have no say about what happens, you know, where people choose to live, you know, and so forth. So, like, on one hand, I commend you for doing housing. Every town on Cape Cod needs to do it. You've moved forward with the Yarmouth Commons, you know, project, and when those doors open up, we're going to have more students come from Yarmouth as well. So, again, just that point, as we move forward, as we talk about numbers escalating.
So, can I just?
Sure.
I guess, and I look at it as, as the alternative, watching what's happening, I think the numbers are going to continue to decline in Dennis. And at some point in time, you know, you're going to have a very, very small percentage in something that we're carrying the cost for. Now, there's, there's a benefit to that. You're getting, we know the cost to that, because we have looked at what deregionalizing looks like to Dennis and going on your own. There's a significant cost to that, and I tune it for about $2 million. So there's certainly a benefit to our partnership. There's no doubt about it, not only financially, educationally. But at what point in time does that, you know, is it fair for us to carry that full benefit for you? So if you get down to you only have a few students, you know, my theory is, build your own school. You don't, you don't want to pay more, build your own school. And I'm not trying to say that in a way, but I mean, from our perspective, there, you have to look at it that way, because to me, that's what the benefit to Dennis is. And whether, whether it's on the foundation or student population, the real, the real issue is, is if you don't have this 4-7 school and you build your own school, it would cost you a whole lot more money to do it on your own. So that's what, I don't think we're asking for a significant amount of money. I mean, it's significant to us, but in terms of the overall thing, I mean, I think I've been pretty, I think we've been very fair in our ask, is my point, is we're not looking for 50/50. We're looking for a few percentage points to help us out, so we can get the project done, and something that I think will help us out, because again, we have, we have a lot of capital, not that it's your issue, but we have a, we have an ME Small school we have to look at. So, again, if, if we don't have this project and we do a Mattakese-ME Small project that's paid for by the voters of Yarmouth in building one school, I, I just, I just hope that you see the value in our partnership in that, and that, as, as your population does continue to decline, at some point in time, we're carrying those costs. We're carrying a lot of costs to the benefit of Dennis. That's my personal opinion.
I do want to ask a question, though, because I wasn't, I guess, I was aware that Mattakese, it was a tear down and has to be, you have to have a new school. And then, I'm, I'm just flinging what my information is, that, and, but you're saying that you would need to repair or replace Mattakese and ME Small. And so I'm, and I wasn't aware of that, I wasn't aware of your issues with ME Small. Then I step back and go, well, how come you're, how come you're not doing the elementary school, and we could have regionalized back with the, with the?
If I can, if I can clarify that. I, I think the way this project started was, it was going to be a Mattakese-only project. And then, I think it was the state that said, it'd probably be more beneficial if you think about combining it with Wixson. Carol Woodbury has stated a number of times at public meetings that when she put Mattakese on the list for replacement, she characterized that school as being the school most in need of replacement at that time, but she said if she had to do it today, she would put the ME Small Elementary School first, because it's in worse condition than the Mattakese School. So those were the dynamics. I mean, the superintendent is the one that arranged to have the Mattakese-only school on the schedule. But, but back to Tracy's point, if Dennis were to build their own school, let's take the hypothetical of a 70/30 context in terms of the allocation of the capital costs of this building, they're not going to build a school for 30% of what this school budget's going to be. I mean, construction, the construction of a school's not driven by student population as some expenses are. For example, I think teachers, that would be a good, we're switching now to operational costs, but for purposes of illustration, teachers, the number of teachers you have would be driven by class sizes, obviously. And so that you could say, well, that, that's, that apportionment works in that particular circumstance. But when you deal with auditoriums, you deal with cafeterias, you deal with gymnasiums, you deal with bathrooms, you deal with hallways, the size of classes, that does not have any rational relationship to the number of students you have in a school. Your school might be slightly smaller, but it's not going to be 70% smaller if you had to build it on your own. So there's a tremendous benefit to Dennis in doing this project as a combined project, probably more so than the benefit to Yarmouth. And, I mean, look at it from our point of view. If you were to build a new school in, in Dennis, and let's say the situation were reversed, and we were going to pay 30%, and you were going to pay 70% of the capital costs, that would be a hell of a deal for us. And we'd even be talking about building a school in Yarmouth under those circumstances. When the school district started out as a regional school district, and they only had the high school that was regionalized, I think the population split was about 55/45, the Yarmouth and Dennis. And that's when the agreement was formulated. There wasn't any, any vision in terms of significant population changes that, that went into that agreement. There weren't provisions for taking periodic looks at the allocations, both capital and operational, to see if those distributions were fair. As Norm says, if you look out the western part of the state, a lot of the new regional school districts, they're, they're dividing the costs based on equalized property values. And they're just looking at the total assessed values in one town, the total assessed values in the other town, and they're figuring out the ratio. And if you did that here, and again, we're not insisting on that, but Dennis has the greater ability to pay. They would be paying under that form, under that concept about 55% of the costs. So, again, I don't think that it's fair, really, to the Yarmouth taxpayers to look at this simply on the basis of the student population in their respective towns.
So I, I, I said this the other night, I'm a numbers gal, so I like to see numbers, but I'd be very interested to see, and maybe? but I'd be very interested to see, and maybe, maybe that we could, technical funds or something to see what, I would really like to know what it would cost, the town, based on what the school is proposed, as it is proposed now. And if it was to house just Dennis's middle school population, what would, what would that cost really be? What if we had to build a new middle school based, and we could do apples and apples because we already have an outline of a building. So, that might, to me, that's a question to say, what would it cost? Like you said, I agree, you still need an auditorium, you still need a gymnasium, you know, certain, you know, you know, you maybe have to have one bathroom per eight students, and then, I'm just making this up, but then you have one more for each additional twelve students or whatever. And I'm sure architects know that, those kind of variables, and I'm just kind of asking my board if that, it just, that's my thought process, is maybe that's something, because I, I think that's a valid point, that if you had to build a school, you're not gonna build thirty percent of a school building. You still have to build it to certain state requirements and certain size constraints, and has to be certain elements contained within it, certain programs, and all that sort of thing, so.
Cheryl, I think the answer to that is, look at what the replacement cost for Wixson is, and that's already been calculated. It's already been calculated.
But that, to me, is, I know that the repair cost is already estimated at forty-two million.
Right.
And I understand it doesn't have to be replaced, it just has to be repaired, which is like forty-two million.
Correct. That's renovating it, yeah.
Right. But I would like to know, but that's renovating a different building that's, you know, may or may not be for, you know, in keeping with the program, kind of concept, that's going into a brand-new school. You know, the shared spaces, I mean, we have brick-and-mortar that's immovable and I-beams and all that sort of thing. So, for me, I'd wanna know, based on the schematic, or, you know, the proposal that's before us for a middle school, what would it like, look like if it was a middle school just for Dennis? And I bet they could do that extrapolation fairly easily. And then we'd all have the same numbers on the same building, on the same, in the same analysis.
I know, I think it'd pretty well tell you that all they would end up doing, for the most part, is collapsing the number of classrooms from what is proposed, and I don't know what the exact number is. They'd collapse that down. They wouldn't, as Mike was talking about, or Tracy was talking about, and then wouldn't be able to do much with the cafeteria, the gym, the...
So that's what I'm saying, I'd like to, I'd like to see what that estimated number, what that calculated cost is. It would, it would bring, it would bring me closer to say, yeah, let's, let's figure out, you know, there are some merits to a discussion about not just enrollment. If we were saying, do we build the school or do we not build this school? I think, from an educational point, I think this school is absolutely necessary. But the taxpayers pay for it, and I think if we were to, as me, as a selectman, if I'm gonna stand up at town meeting, I'd better know what that, what that number is and how I got it. So, I'm sorry.
I think, as you know, you know, we, during the negotiation process, we had talked about the operating costs and the, and the capital costs being tied together. It wasn't just, we didn't feel that it was appropriate to look at just one in isolation. I mean, if, if we, on the other hand, say, okay, let's take operating costs off the table. We won't change the agreement with regard to operating costs. We'll just clean up the agreement, because we did a lot of work on that, Cleon and I did, and, and other board members as well, but, and, so, we clean up the agreement and we agreed to a more, from our standpoint, a more palatable number on the capital costs. I haven't talked with our board about this, but, you know, it might be, we might be willing at that point to say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna leave the operating cost arrangement as it is. And I know the enrollment numbers, John has some issues with foundation enrollment. My belief has always been, we need to use foundation enrollment throughout because that's the students that we're, that we send to the, whatever school, and that's the student, that's the number of students that are in the budget. And, you know, dividing by a different number, the number of kids that are in the school as of September, or October first, just doesn't compute for me. It's the wrong, using the wrong number. So, you know, the, if that was a direction that Dennis wanted to pursue, then I think, you know, we could, we could seriously think about that. But I think we'd be asking for, you know, a lot larger contribution in terms of capital costs.
I would just like to throw some numbers out there, and this is only me speaking, but, you know, I'm sitting on this board for a while, we always use certain numbers when we go through them. And I think a number that I've always seen, that has always kind of keeps coming back up, is a sixty-five, thirty-five split. That's been a pretty common number, and that if you go back and ask, and you're right, because at the beginning, when we started doing this, it was just the high school, and then the numbers came up, and then they couldn't go back as far, but that was kind of a common number. And I hope that we have more children in Dennis. I would, I would, I would wish that for us. I want it. But for me, a real comfortable number as a starting point, for me, is a sixty-five, thirty-five. Because it's been there for awfully long time, back and forth. Now we have things that change, like school choice. Dennis needs to pay for their kids that may go someplace else. We own them, and it shouldn't be on a, it's almost like, I'd like to say, okay, how many of our students in Dennis go to Monomoye, or Nauset, or Barnstable, or wherever? We need to know those numbers, we need to know who they are, because we need to pay for them. They're ours, they belong to ours, instead of kind of amounting everything together and hoping, and, you know, so, I don't want Yarmouth to ever think that they're paying for any Dennis kids that have made choices to go someplace else in particular. And we know the ones that are here at our school. But we, there's been a lot of change and shifting. And hopefully, with this new school, we're gonna get more kids staying here, because I think that's, that's one of the other things that's a benefit for us as well. One of the things that, that has caused numbers to drop in Dennis is the fact that Monomoye has built a new school right next door, and people love new. Whether it's a new restaurant, or a new hotel, or something, they go to the new place. And by having a new school here, four through seven, wouldn't that be great? Because maybe more kids will stay in Dennis, and I'm hoping for that. That's just a number I throw, that I've, that I've been comfortable with for a number of years, just because I've seen it over and over again. I know there has been changes, but I'll throw that up there.
In that respect, would Dennis be, if you like those numbers, willing to commit to those numbers as far as operating costs as well? Because I think that's the key component.
I think we need to, we will need to discuss that, because we're going, you made a comment earlier, Norm, that you would be willing to keep the operating costs as-is if we increased our capital costs for the new school. So even if we keep them as-is, I would still ask for, and go with a foundation enrollment versus a net enrollment, not a sixty-five, thirty-five. But that's something that we really need to talk about, I think.
So, and I, oh, did you wanna say something? So, into the point of, the same point, I think, applies in part to the fact that when you build, you can't build, like you said, you're not gonna build thirty percent of a building because you have thirty percent of the children. And I think that, for me, that point's well taken. I also think, in terms of the operating budget, that there are some things that you are still gonna pay pretty close to the same price. A superintendent, you're not gonna hire a superintendent at thirty percent of the cost for a superintendent, or the principals in your own specific building, or, you know, the certain resources, and most of it is, we're, just like our town's operations, schools' costs are mostly driven by staff and personnel, just like, just like our towns are. And I would be willing to look at, and I know there was a master list that was done, and I, when I looked at it, I wasn't totally comfortable with it. Because I thought some of them might actually be driven because of a certain ratio of students. Curriculum director, I mean, but then again, if you have a curriculum in your school, you're not gonna pay thirty percent of a curriculum director. So I, I get that, but that's, that's something I would wanna work in a much smaller setting so I could understand exactly what's involved in those. And it would be, it would be a grind, but I think it's something that, when you would get to the other end and exhaust it, the discussion about it, I know for me, I can say, I know it, I learned it, I studied it, I'm comfortable with it, and I can tell you exactly why I'm bringing this case forward, for this way. That's why I'm, I'm really hopeful that the two contingencies groups could get together to go through the Smalls, or somehow get that work done. And I'm not saying it'll, would be done in, you know, two months, or three months, or four. But I think it's something that, I, because I have no idea what the school committee's doing, gonna do with it. And I don't think that, for me, I'd have a much better comfort level with it.
I think one of the, we tend to get lost in the detail, and if we come back to the big picture, because, you know, Bob talked about the foundation enrollment, about, I'll leave as a rough number, eighty percent of the total operating costs of the school are covered by Chapter Seventy's formula. And that's all foundation enrollment. So what we've been arguing about over, over the last number of years has been that additional twenty percent of the cost. It's about $10 million right now. It probably grows a little bit every year, but it's about $10 million. So we've been arguing about how to allocate those, that $10 million between the two towns. And Yarmouth's position has been that the total school budget has about $10 million of fixed costs. Now, we boiled that down to 2.9 million because it was a matter of bargaining back and forth. But we have quite a bit of documentation that that extra $10 million in costs, that remaining twenty percent is mostly fixed costs. And that's really what our point has been, is that we really want a more stability in that situation, because what's happening with enrollment changes is, we're having to pick up those, those fixed costs, the share that had previously been shouldered by Dennis. So, you know, I think that that's, that's a key issue for us, and it's, you know, operating costs, fixed costs, you know, push one down, the other pops up. And that's kind of where we're, you know, I think we're, we're at at this point. You know, we, we believe that we need a fairer approach with that extra $10 million of costs, and we believe that that is principally a fixed cost. And we need a fairer approach, from our perspective, I understand, and I'm not saying you're being unfair, but, and a different approach with regard to the capital costs as well.
If I could add to that, Norm. The 2.9 million dollars that the $10 million was reduced to came as a result of a lot of input from Superintendent Woodbury, who sat down with our town accountant, Richby and Venu, and they boiled down the list to, as Cheryl mentioned, a lot of it was administrative costs, superintendents, and payroll people, and people of that nature. And that's where that number came from. And we thought that the subcommittee at least tentatively agreed that that 2.9 million was gonna be divided fifty-fifty. Instead of based, this is, again, over and above, as Norm said, this is the funds over and above the Chapter Seventy allocations. And out of that $10 million, 2.9 million of that was identified as not student-driven, but costs that either district would have if they had their own administration. And then out of that 2.9, that was gonna be divided between the two towns equally.
So, you know, if you, if you look at it from the standpoint of the total operating cost budget of, of the district, and what, is it 60 million? It's somewhere in that neighborhood, 50 to 60 million is the total budget. And, you know, what we've been, been thrashing around about is the, is 3 million of that, 60 million, that are, that are really hardcore, principally staff-related fixed costs, but there's some supplies and things of that nature in there. But, you know, so, you know, all the, all the remaining costs, the 57 million is driven by foundation enrollment, and that's, and that's, we would continue to do that. So, you know, again, I, we tend to rassle around the numbers and get lost in the detail, but, you know, if you look at the big picture, we're really not talking, most of the costs would continue to be allocated based upon enrollment.
Can I just, I guess, when I think, when I think about what you're saying, in the administrative costs, you know, you think about your population continuing to decline, why should the taxpayers of Yarmouth pay the OPEB benefits 70%, 65% of the teachers that taught your students? As that goes down, Yarmouth picks that up. But those were something that you benefited from. When you turn the light on in here, you can't turn 30% on. You turn, you're gonna light up the whole room. For me, and I don't know if the rest of the board, and I probably made my comments known, this has been a long process. I think this school is very important to both of our communities in terms of turning around outgoing students, for one, if that is a potential. I hope it is. But I think at this point, having said all that, we've been at this for a decade, a decade of putting hard feelings behind. I think that, over the past many years, this board here has taken a consistent role of putting up the two-and-a-half percent, plus making sure we cover the cost of our students. But at this point in time, for me, I think it's, you know, I'm not gonna speak for them, but me, I like to pick my battles. And I feel like if we can get the 60-40 split on the rest, and we can agree that in a couple of years, we go back to the table, and we continue to work on these other issues, then I'd be comfortable with that. I don't think all or nothing is probably what we should be doing right now. I guess what bothers me is when we, we sent this letter, and this is why I'm glad that you're in front of us, we send the letters about some of the issues that we have, and basically, the position is that you don't want any change. So if you don't want any change, I think that that's something that we should just know and be honest with, when we need to make a decision whether or not we need to live with that. That's the impression that I got from this response, was, nothing's gonna change. Thanks for working a year, spending all that time, but we really don't want any change. So I don't know if this letter was from, I know it was signed by, I think, Bob. I didn't know if it was consensus of the board, or if there is actually an opportunity to make some progress on some of the level. I mean, whether if it's not, if the board isn't comfortable on the administrative costs, isn't, it's not comfortable on the capital costs. Are we gonna have any give here? I mean, I think we've been very fair in trying to lay out a perspective and, and our points, but we've been making offers. There's not been one counter offer from your board at all. Or, I mean, well, hearing now that you wanna keep talking, which is great, but at some point in time, we need to move off the mark. We need to have some decision of consensus from your board, yes, we wanna change something, or no, we really just wanna keep it the way it is. And that's fine, too, but we just need to know, because we need to make decisions about what our future looks like.
So in fairness, you know, with Cheryl just coming on and taking over for Cleon, and so forth, you know, we have our subcommittee, if you will, which is Cheryl and Bob, and of course, two members of our finance committee, which I believe is Jim Plath and Pat Stone, and so forth. So, I, and correct me, because I'm not privy to everything you guys are doing, but I think it's, have you guys, have the four of you met yet since, Cheryl, you have come on board as a committee?
Yes.
Yes, we did. Very, in, very...
Informally.
Yeah, but it was, it was to actually... Yeah, but it was, it was to actually, I forget what the last one we did was, we talked about, we talked as a contingency about a foundation enrollment, and that's where we, we left the mark, was foundation enrollment. We did not talk about the entire school, the regional school agreement, because at that particular time, we thought it was just going to be talking about feasibility study and the capital cost.
So i- in continuing, I would like the opportunity for our four subcommittee members to meet, and to discuss what we've talked, we've talked about this evening, and, and then come back to you with, if there's no change, there's no change, and we'll, and that's fine. If, if we can move on something, then we'll let you know. And I know we have to move quickly on this thing, but I think that it's fair that we include our other two members, and then come back to you with a, with a, am I, am I speaking out of turn, or is Bob?
And we, we, just so you know where we, because I, I know you're familiar with our finance committee, and generally their position on, on things, but it would be fair to bring them into the discussion, and the viewpoints that you've expressed tonight, particularly about the school building. And we, as the two of us, and our two counterparts, know that we can agree to disagree, so it could be some, some sort of resolution from the negotiating, I keep calling it the negotiating team, putting those parties back together, back to the table.
And I will say, Tracy, just to speak on a couple of the things that you had mentioned, in response to the letter that was sent from Yarmouth to Dennis, it was mostly geared towards the allocation of the two point nine million dollars. The letter, the way it was written, and the statement that is in the proposed agreement from Yarmouth to the school committee, states that the apportionment calculated according to the preceding formula shall be adjusted by reallocation of two point nine oh three one twenty-eight to Dennis, apportion cost, and subtracted of the same amount from Yarmouth's apportion cost. We discussed it being split, that verbiage says all of it's coming back to Dennis.
Let me address that, Norm.
And I understand that may not be your intent.
I saw that letter as part of our packet today, and I called Norm about it, because it certainly did not reflect what the subcommittee's was thinking about. And I, and I don't think there's anything intentional there, I think that was just-
I'm sorry, that's all on me.
I think, I think that was a, I don't know who drafted, but that was a poorly written letter, that was not the intent.
So I hope you can understand our response.
At that meeting, we talked about the two point nine mil, and we talked about it being divided equally, and we certainly don't expect, you know, a dime more contribution than that from Dennis, that, again, and I-
So now it's water under the bridge.
Right, so with all that-
I flagged that today, I called Norm about it. Now let me address capital for a moment.
Well, before you do, I just want to reiterate, we are very interested in working to figure this out for the better of our-
But you're correct on that, that is not, that is misstated.
So I would like to invite the Yarmouth contingency back to the table with the Dennis contingency to continue these conversations.
Now, on capital, just for the record, we had come to the table with various proposals. One was the equalized property values, one was, I think that we started a fifty-fifty split on capital, and, and agenda after agenda, we asked Dennis to come up with an offer on capital, and, and they never did, other than status quo, which, in my opinion, is a non-offer, it's a zero offer. Of all those meetings that we had, Dennis never made a proposal, a counter offer on capital, which, it's very hard for us as a subcommittee to come back to our full board and, and make a report, well, what happened? It's on the agenda again, what happened? What happened? What was their counter offer? There weren't any. And I had to address that with Cleon, and, and I wrote him a, an email, a detailed email at one time, and I said, look, Cleon, if we're going to do anything on this, there's got to be some good faith. You have to negotiate in good faith. I never heard back. And don't get me wrong, Cleon's a brother, and I, and I have a great respect for him, and I like him very much, but he was the only reason, the complaint went to him was he was chairman, and no other reason of the subcommittee. But we never got, to this day, a, a proposal from Dennis on an allocation of capital, other than that, we're going to stand pat. That's a fact.
Yeah, and I'm, I don't think anybody on this board has any problem with continuing to negotiate, as long as we're moving forward, or we're not. I think the frustrating part is for a subcommittee who has met for over a year with no vote taken by your board at all, on any of the things, and we're still in the same place. So, and then the letter that says, status quo, so if that's the case, that's the case. If you want to negotiate, I think that that's great, too, but I think that we should have some benchmarks, or perhaps a date that we could work towards, because continuing to talk when, I mean, it's unfortunate that your full board hasn't had a discussion on these topics. I mean, our, our subcommittee had been coming back to us, and we had been having full discussions on the points as they went forward, so that we were very well informed of what was going on, and, you know, I heard about the fifty-fifty, we talked about the sixty-forty, I mean, it's been something that we've been discussing, but we want to look at it now again. So at some point in time, we need to move forward. Have some response, some formal response from your board on any of the topics. So I don't know what you feel is an adequate date, but perhaps we could set a time on that?
Well, we have, we have talked about this with the finance committee in public, and in, as far as I know, it was, it's clear, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's very clear that they have agreed to the proposal that we talked about earlier on the split of the feasibility study. So even though Yarmouth put, the feasibility study?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the feasibility study, right.
Yeah, that, I don't want to say it's a done deal, but, I mean, all the parties are in agreement to move forward with that, when it, when it comes up, and I have no reason why that wouldn't, that wouldn't happen.
Right.
So I actually watched the meeting that you had with your finance committee, and I guess the sense that I got from that was that you were uncomfortable being not in consistent agreement with them. I'm not sure if that will ever change. So we just do nothing? And that's fine, too, but I think we need to know.
I, I need to interject something, because I, this afternoon, I watched the last meeting of the negotiating committee, and, and in deference to Mike, Cleon put on the table a proposal that he said had the agreement of the entire board. He, he said it was not necessarily unanimous, but he said it was being, he was speaking for the board. And he said that the proposal that they, that you folks were presenting was the two point nine million of fixed costs being split fifty-fifty, and a thirty-five percent split on the capital costs. And that was what he presented as the proposal from Dennis. And, you know, I think we, at that point, had been at, we're asking for a fifty-fifty split on capital. So the way we parted is, we planned at that time to get back together in two weeks, and Cleon and I were to work in the meantime to hash out some of the wording differences that still existed, and a lot of nits and gnats, not, not big stuff. And our board and your board would have a further chance to talk about the, the split of costs. And what we, after, now I realize, and, you know, the, the next thing we heard was that, well, everything's off the table. At least, that's what we heard informally. We didn't have a, a written letter from you folks, that was what we, we understood. Could have been wrong, but that's what we understood. So, you know, what Mike said about not having a concrete proposal on the table is true, because we thought everything had been withdrawn. So, and I'm not saying that, that we would have accepted that, because I, you know, I don't want to go over the same territory all over again, but, you know, because I, I think we've got to look at the, everything in total. And, but I think we, we need to move forward. Our, our energy for this is, has been dissipated substantially, so we need to have some, some significant progress. I don't think we're that far apart, I really don't. Like I said, we're dealing with, of the total school budget, we're dealing with a very small fraction of the, of the money that, that we're talking about. And, you know, the-
So I, I agree with Tracy, that's what we, no, no, but I agree with getting, setting a, a goal of some, some sort, and I don't know, I don't know what that is, but we could-
Yeah, I think the problem we have now is the new school building is the public, the public process and getting the engagement of our population, and what the actual dollars to them, I think, is going to be significant. And if, you know, they're watching what's happening, and I think, you know, if we had something to tell them, I know it's not a lot of time, but from my perspective, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, it would be nice if it was sooner rather than later.
Because we all have to sell it, and you don't even know what you're selling yet. And I agree.
That's exactly right, yeah, yeah. I, I think that's, you know, if we move back from the December fourth vote date, you know, we've, we've committed to, we haven't finalized details, but having public meetings, and I'm sure you folks are going to do the same thing. And our, our select board's position on this entire project is predicated on where we are with the agreement. We, we just cannot see ourselves moving forward in the present situation, just because of the financial burden that we see. And I'm not threatening, I'm just saying, that's, that's the informal discussion we've had so far. Hasn't come down to a vote, we haven't said, this is it. But, you know, the general consensus has been that we have a very difficult time supporting the project with the present arrangements, so, and, and that's where we are.
So, put a check next to the feasibility study funding, calculating this, calculating the split capital costs on the middle school, we should just put that on the agenda and-
Hash it out.
Hash it out, and talk about it publicly, and get all of our feedback, give a little time for meeting here, and see where we're at with it. And I, I still am, would be more comfortable knowing the numbers, but I'll, from my perspective, but I'll see about investigating how that would, how that could be accomplished, if it can be accomplished. And we should make a meeting-
We have special town meeting on the sixteenth of October. Do we have another selectmen's meeting prior to that, the second, the second?
That's next week.
Right.
So, I, I won't be here, but if you want to talk about it, that's fine.
Let's wait until after special town meeting.
Maybe we should schedule a schedule for the ninth. We don't have a meeting scheduled, but maybe we should, we should. That gives us a week and a half.
Jack, can we schedule for the ninth?
Just on your mind, Carol is actually looking to have a meeting with the town and all the finance committees and selectmen, I think, that date.
What time?
I'm sorry, who was?
Carol Woodbury.
Carol Woodbury, the school district, so I think they were looking to have a meeting on the building on that night.
School committee meeting Monday night, they, they should have the, the costs-
On that Tuesday, on the ninth?
And wanting to bring everybody together, because that's when they're going to start their, their public forums, so.
And what time is that meeting? What's that?
Nine in the morning. That, you're talking about the meeting, the school, the, the building committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nine in the morning.
The building committee is, but there, there was a meeting that was trying to be coordinated amongst all the boards, the finance committees, the boards of selectmen, that additional. And Chris, you might have some information on that.
No, you're correct.
Oh, is it five?
The ninth at what time?
Five, stand right there.
The ninth at five?
So what is, what is the thought regarding, oh, your board would be trying to get together during that time period?
Maybe after, we could find a date that week, the eighth, ninth, I mean, the tenth, eleventh, you-
The eleventh is a Thursday, fine with that.
I'll do whatever you want.
You rule around on the eleventh?
I'll check, but-
It would be good to talk about it after we get the numbers. Because we have town meeting the next, on the sixteenth, so that wouldn't work. Or the fifteenth, Monday, the fifteenth?
Do the fifteenth.
We can do Monday, the fifteenth, too.
How is, how is the fifteenth?
Eleventh is better for me.
Okay. I can make the eleventh work, or the fifteenth.
Eleventh works for me.
Let's do it.
All right. Hard to believe it's actually October, we're talking about scheduling this in October.
Should be in our hearing room, everybody complains about the air conditioner.
No, it's, um-
Do we need any further follow-up on our part at this stage?
So we can assume that by mid-October, we'd have some response from the board?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, in the, the school agreement, the, getting back to the table about that, let's do email and figure out a calendar.
I think that's fine, you know, we could do that, and, you know, we really are not very far apart on that. I think, you know, when we get through this, the operating costs and the fixed costs, I mean, and correct the wording, the operating costs, and I apologize, that's my, that's all on me. I, that was, you know, I'm not the greatest typist in the world, and I filled in a blank, and it was, you know, so.
Thank you for suggesting this meeting, it's helped.
Well, I'm glad, I think, I'm very positive, so.
A lot at stake here, it's important.
We'll look forward to a, a good resolution for all of us.
Make it work.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Move to motion to adjourn, move somewhat.
A favor?
Aye. Thank you, everyone, really.
Yes, thank you very much.